Ladder please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is special meeting agenda for Monday, March twenty one, twenty twenty two, seven AM start. It's called the order. It's right, uh, rise from the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to pledge my flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you roll call George Bell?
Here.
Dan Maruza?
Here.
David Hughes?
Here.
Michelle Kercher? Carl Stakers. So we have the total four supervisors here. First word, this is not the motion to approve the agenda.
I give your motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a couple of comments. First, we have Carol Ivan.
Uh, my comments would be brief and they stem from actually, uh, all of the meetings that I've watched. Not all of your meetings, but the ones I've watched this entire year. Um, something is troubling and it's especially important for tonight's meeting. Um, my comment is, actually, it's three comments. Um, I would hope that as we proceed in discussions, that we could do it without badmouthing former managers and administrations and criticizing past decisions. We need to learn from the past, but there is no need to rehash it endlessly, as I have observed quite a bit. We are here now, we need to proceed from here. On a similar note, I would hope we can begin to say the words Ready Country Club without negativity, without bitterness, even hostility, as has come up every time I hear it. We need to accept it as the asset to the township that it is. We have it, it's ours now. Until we decide, maybe at some future time to release it, we need to make the most of it along with all of our other resources. And Exeter Township has a lot of resources. We have a lot of things going for us. You would not know it if you go on social media and a lot of other negative things in the environment, but we do have a great deal going for us. Um, my last point just came to me on Friday night. Please, 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 can we keep the nice new logo we have? It is beautiful, it was done by a professional person who understood graphics. It is more relevant to what we're doing to us today than the old logo of an Indian arrowhead and rifles. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next is, uh, Vinnie Deacon.
Thank you. Uh, Vinnie Deacon, thirty six oh nine, Perfectman Avenue. Um, so I mean, I know there's not much on the agenda to comment on, but, uh, there's, I guess I'm just more sort of want to see where we're gonna go with this. Uh, there's a lot of great things that could possibly be there. Yeah, three minutes, I know. There's a lot of great things that could be there. Um, so I agree with her about the forward thinking and, uh, you know, there's a lot of people who are not in my backyard type people and you gotta think of the future, what, we're not gonna be here, I'm not gonna be here, you know, fifty years down the line, so what are we gonna do that's gonna improve for the rest, like my children, your children, your grandchildren? That's all, I just wanna make sure that everybody stays open and not close-minded on things. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, I think I'd like to start the meeting by saying that, um, this is an open discussion with the board. However, if we have a comment that pertains to the things that we're talking about tonight, I would like for you to wait until the end of the meeting to make those comments. We, uh, we have a great deal of things to work on as a board. I think that you have a board, whether you support us in everything that we do or don't, we have the best interest of Exeter Township at heart. And what we're going to do while we're all in office is do the best to make Exeter Township the best township it could possibly be. There are a lot of things that we have witnessed and I agree with the comments of the first resident, that I think that our focus should be more forward-looking than spending time in the rearview mirror. The, um, there is absolutely, in some cases, nothing that we can do about what happened ten years ago or five years ago, but there is a great deal that we can do about the next five years and the next ten. Because we can set the table, whether some of the people that are on the board now continue to be on the board or not, we can set the table and put them in a much better position going forward, maybe than what we started to, when we came as well in January. So what I'd like to do is open it up with the board to talk about our goals and our priorities. And I think what will happen tonight, we will spend time talking about those goals and probably at the next meeting or in probably the meeting after that, define the priorities and orders. While we have, uh, David just said a few minutes ago to me, I have forty-six things I'd like to talk about, right? And, and trust me, a number of those forty-six things are spot on, the things that we should be doing, but what we have to look at is what can we get done in amount of time that we have? And what can we get done within the money that we have? Because most of the things that we want to do cost money. And we want to maintain kind of where we are and not create a situation where there are tax increases and things of that nature, but the fact of the matter is, is that if we're all paying attention, nothing has changed, uh, other than the fact that everything that we're buying today, whether it's in grocery store or the gas pump, is the same price we bought it a few years ago. It's all gone out. So we have to be realistic that we move through this and we have to be smart about how we spend and just how we're managing all of the cases, how do we spend your own, which is also a hard thing for all residents of Exeter Township. So I will open it up to the floor, to, um, the supervisors to talk about things that they would like to see as well.
Thanks Carl and everyone else for attending this evening. My voice carrying okay? I think I'll just leave with a few thoughts, maybe prioritize a few thoughts and start the conversation and I'll yield the microphone so everyone can make some thoughts, uh, that approach works for the board. So, to start off, I was thinking about a few different things in anticipation of this meeting and ideas that I'd like to share for consideration sooner than later, various priorities at first. We are trying to multitask, but when I look at the combination of two key things, the Ready Country Club, RFP, and the sense of the Township Manager, RFP, both very critically important, starting with the Township Manager one. That's a highly influential position that's picking up beyond this current board very well. They have influence beyond this existing board. I myself, here, uh, I mentioned this last meeting, need to invest the time in vetting the right candidates and I do grow, maybe as a business person, it'd be frustrating, is actually the word, uh, in the speed of getting that circulated. So I guess my point is Township Manager. I want as wide of a funnel of candidates as we can get, but mostly I would like to see a funnel of candidates. So what I mean by that is let's get a RFP circulated in those case and then spend time in the vetting of the candidates in the language in the contract and making sure we're the right woman or man in that job, is really what I'd like to invest the time. So that is my biggest wish in the short term here. I'll equate it with the Ready Country Club. Uh, the RFP process here again, very key, uh, to get the right vendor or vendors involved in that endeavor. The thing is, uh, similar to the other one, I'd like the widest possible mouth of the funnel of candidates, so I'd like to see that, again, in those cases, be circulated and then invest the time in the contract language and the vetting of the requisite proposed candidates so that, uh, we're spending our time there. Meeting to meeting, I watch down their turn and it feels like, I guess I'm saying I'm a little frustrated with the speed of that. So that's my biggest ask. I'll make one or two other comments on that. I realize the microphone structure, so I'll make some comments and pass it, but, uh, those were two top minds. On a related front, I'll make a pair of others and then I'll do some force makes correct. So as it involves the, uh, staffing and space for our personnel in the township, one idea that I think we could throw on the agenda soon was one that David and I had some conversations on and I believe there is a possibility for an indirect strategy that would involve using the nearby district justice office, which is nearly entirely vacant except for our new tax collector, but have the ability to tour that facility and it is freshly painted and definitely can have some, uh, uh, non-resident form personnel, office personnel, whether it be part zoning or, uh, the, uh, administrator folks, I'm not sure exactly who, I don't have that format yet, but we could use that, it's allowing our mending to keep our buildings, uh, kept and by using it, we'd be making good use of that space. What it would potentially allow would be twelve to fifteen head count into that building, potentially officer space in the existing municipal building. Uh, so while we're having a larger strategy, we can give somebody some help over there. So that's just the covenants of the strategy. Obviously, a little work has to be done, but the district justice building not moving ready today, but it's painted, it was an office building, it's still an office building. Might need a little bit of cubicle setup or room dividers. I'm not saying it's ready to go tomorrow, but it's definitely viable for conversation. And then my fourth and final prepared remark for the moment is, uh, having to do with, uh, as, ever since I was a candidate to the board, being in business, I had looked at the business section of our website and it's actually dubbed Doing Business in Exeter. And, uh, ever since I first looked at it till present day, uh, it basically says, uh, coming soon, which, uh, is fair. Look, we're not doing that for a second, that's not really the point I'm making. What I'm, what I'm really trying to get at is I think there's perhaps more we can do and I don't need necessarily me personally, but, uh, one way or any other, uh, I would like to facilitate it. I don't necessarily do any of this particular endeavor, it's pretty big, but, uh, I, I think what I'm saying is, uh, for example, there's a greater rate of chamber of congress, uh, chamber alliance, excuse me, because chamber of congress is well, what I was referring to the alliance, audience and they even have a keystone enterprise zone, which I believe Exeter is part of and I will candidly say I don't know too much about. So I can take it upon myself, I'll learn more there, but either that kind of an idea or even, uh, business leaders in the community, there could be something you can do, uh, you know, business for the, uh, township. And I would just like to try to be the tip of the spear of that to help move that forward. It'd be a shame if I came and go two years, Terry, and it still said, uh, coming soon. I would be disappointed with that. Those were four points, perhaps it would be a spot for me to yield the microphone to another supervisor.
Thank you, thank you.
So a lot of it is gonna be repetitive issues, but I'll talk about what's important to me. Township manager's huge, uh, I'd like to get that underway. Uh, I think we're falling short right now because we don't have a person in place who can lead the employees in the building as well as lead the board. Uh, there's a lot we don't know, a lot that a township manager that was qualified could bring to the board and educate us in some areas and, um, help us along the way. We're a very new board. Um, four members on the board are extremely new, uh, so we have a lot to learn and we're learning along the way. Um, and, but we, we still have a long way to go. The, uh, Ready Country Club definitely top on my list. Um, I'm gonna get it up and running. So I won't reiterate what George Oring said, but I, I think for most of us, we know, uh, it's there. We'd like to start making some money, um, get the restaurant and the banquet facilities up and running so that more residents in the township as well as outside of the township can start enjoying that beautiful building. It needs some work, but we know we're gonna have to spend some money to get it where it needs to be, but at the end of the day, I think it will benefit all of us if we can get that up and running better than it was before by bringing someone in to manage that for us and also, uh, manage the, the golf course. Uh, whether that be one party that does both or separate parties, cast a wide net, see what we come up with and see what benefits the residents the most, um, to make the most of the Ready Country Club. Emergency services buildings, that's another priority for me. Uh, we need space, like we did with the worst that, um, about moving temporarily, we could relax the tax collector building. We know we need to do something for the fire department, we know we need to do something for the police department. We know we need more space for conflict works. So that is also a priority. Where can we do that? Be most fiscally responsible by doing that. Not getting ourselves into a huge amount of debt by doing that. So that the pain is, we don't want to give our pain, that, that's not what I want to do financially for the residents. The last thing, and this is a minor thing, but we need to, and this would benefit the residents, we need a better audio system and maybe a better meeting place for people. We had asked to, uh, obtain some information from some of the other townships on what they use, uh, because we know that what we have is not working. It, it's not sufficient for what we need for these meetings to allow them to be video streamed and for people to participate. We need that, we need to, uh, engage in something like that. Spend the money, do what we need to do so that we can have a meeting space, people can watch it, even using, this is bigger than what we use in the township building, isn't it? Where we don't have the audio or video view that we can use, um, to make this work for us. So we gotta find a better solution so we can engage the residents more in our meetings. I think people, the meeting tonight, um, we would like to have some community meetings where we do get a lot of feedback from the residents about what we'd like to see. This was kind of put together at the last minute for us to kind of get our goals together. It's difficult, we're very limited, we probably don't know this, about what we can and can't discuss more than two of us at a time. So we're trying to plan the best way we can to move forward, but I can play it first. I agree with what Carl said, I don't know that we can be all over the place. I think we need to have three to five priorities that we're moving forward on and once we get those moving, then we move to the next three to five priorities. Otherwise, we're not gonna be able to move down all over the place. That's why I think it, so, um, that's all I got.
As you can expect, I don't disagree with some of the things.
Can you please speak louder?
I, I disagree with some of the things that have been said, but not, not everything. We can do more than three things, we're capable of doing more than three things. Supervisors can't congregate in numbers of three or more. It's kind of like convicts, they don't even congregate in three or more, you know? But, uh, we can assign, uh, topics or issues to two supervisors. We can go out and do the footwork, get things together and bring them back to the board when we need a session. So we can actually have several, six or seven projects going on. And some of the things on my list will not take a lot of work, it really won't. But let me, let me go through the number one thing, which I think we all agree on in meetings previously, and that is the Ready Country Club. What this township has done with that country club, I'm embarrassed. I'm really embarrassed, I mean, we, the money we wasted. You know, we took out eighteen million dollars in loans to initially buy us and then the two point seven million that we were supposed to use for capital improvements, we spent on other things. The fact we spent over a million, we paid the one point seven million of this money to pay off the bonds that we borrowed the money with. You know, it's like taking out a mortgage, then taking the money and paying off your mortgage, okay? Uh, silly things like that. And, uh, I have some, some things, and I'm really talking to the board here. This is a meeting for us to, to, to talk about, okay? Whether they agree or not, they don't see all the things that we see. If they saw the things that we see that's going on, they would be aghast, they really would. Is there anyone that disagrees with what I just said? It's enormously disordered in, in, in our township. It's a toxic environment. On the board, it's toxic, in, in, in the, in the administration, it's toxic. You have no idea, you have absolutely no idea. For example, we have no job descriptions. I just got a list of job descriptions and I was late, I couldn't believe these job descriptions. They, they don't really tell me what the people are doing. It's like the fantasy of this is the job I would love to have, but it doesn't exist. We have no policies, right, guys? Talking to you, we have no policies, right? So I think one of our major, uh, top items to do is we need to get a human resource firm contracted then. They've got all the experience and policies, we can immediately, almost immediately, have policies for everything that we need. They can also help us find the township manager. They can help us find the people we need to manage the Ready Country Club. Uh, so that should be one of our critical top priorities. We should get a, a human resource organization onboard at, so that should be number one, okay? In my mind, because then it takes care of the other top numbers, the township manager, the Ready Country Club manager. But, uh, back to the RCC. There's a number of things I see that we need to do, I'm gonna break them out for, for, for you guys, okay? We need an overall comprehensive plan. I mean, if you look at what we've done in the past, we've, it's kind of nickel and dime. We go out, we get a, a bid for the, the big HBAC unit at the top of the building, right? And now we're, we're, we got one, we're going, we got one for the smaller unit, oh, the whiskey bar. You know, why didn't we have all these things evaluated? So I think we need to evaluate the roofing, we need to evaluate the plumbing, the whole electrical system, the foundation, the painting inside the building. What I'd like to see happen, I don't know if this is practical or not, is that we take yellow tape and we, and we, and we taped out a, uh, a path where we can have the public come in and look at the devastation inside the, the clubhouse. See what the last four years of these board supervisors, what they did, okay? And I'm not gonna forget the past, I'm gonna hold them responsible because I have a list of forty-six things because they didn't do anything! So we need a company that's a plan. And then we need to work on the management and the operation and that comes in with the, with the human resource of company. Finding out the condition of the building, not just the, the clubhouse, but the, uh, pro shop too. I mean, that's been like the two, it's a smaller issue, but it's still there. I hope that we're accumulating the cost for all of this. Okay, now we've had some people go in and clean up, we've had third parties go in and do some work inside the kitchens. Oh boy, the kitchens, such a shame. Four years of sitting there with all the equipment, there's rust on it, it's sitting there doing nothing. You know what happens when something sits for forty years and you don't use it? I mean, it's bad, it's bad. So, uh, I like to get, I, I cost of all this because I wanna see if we can do anything about going back to these supervisors who ignored the, the specific security requirement of our tests to maintain the assets and the buildings of this township. I wanna pierce their protection and go after them if we can do that. You hear that, Chad? Okay? Uh, and look. So, so that's where we are with the RCC. And I don't know if the people would like to go in and see the mess that they see, but we get a lot of people commenting, do this, do that, hand it up. Why is it, I would, I would love them to see the condition of this property inside. The golf course. So someone said, actually several people, like, you knew said, you agree with it, let's ignore the past, okay? Do you want to ignore the past when in twenty twenty-three, the Ready Country Club is gonna have its centennial year? So should we celebrate that or should we forget the past? Or we just pick and choose what part of the past we forget and what part of the past we remember, okay? So I'm proposing that we start working towards having a really great celebration of the centennial of the Ready Country Club. We should be planning for that now. We should have a grand opening of the clubhouse. Even if we get the clubhouse open this year, even if we're selling food, selling beverages, uh, we have the grand opening in twenty twenty-three coincide with the centennial year. We should develop a special tournament for the golf course to, uh, celebrate this centennial year. And then, of course, organize a special celebration. And, and I ask the question to the board, if you, if you do like I do, I go back and I read the minutes, the history of this township, even though we shouldn't pay any attention to the history, the recent history of our minutes tells us a lot of citywide problems. And recently, in the last two years or so, there was a master plan, I don't know how much money, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, that was authorized by this board, a master plan for the golf course. Well, where is this master plan? Did we pay for it? Are we obligated to go through with it? I don't know, it's not carrying on, old business, the new business, or, or any business. So that's the number one priority, the Ready Country Club. And I look at it as a combination of the food, beverage, the, the, and the golf course. They're slipping on it. So, and the other one is the HR. The other one too, a reorganization of our government and our departments. How do I put this in a nice way? Everybody wants to be the vice president in the company, okay? I mean, they dream those things and when you read these job descriptions, does anyone here write the job descriptions? They've been helping a lot, have you written the job descriptions? You wrote the, okay, I, I do my work, I work seven days a week for you, okay? And that's why I afford these opinions, I do a lot of study. Everybody doesn't have to agree with me, but I'm gonna share my opinions on this thing. So the job descriptions are like all these directors, assistant directors, okay? Managers, assistant managers. I want to, we're, we only have a twelve million dollar budget, folks, you know? And I wanna flatten out the organization. We don't need all these different levels, we don't manufacture anything, we're here to serve you. The fewer levels that you have to deal with, the better I think you're gonna get service here. So the organization is government and departments. So reorganization of the government and departments. I think we need a forensic audit. Michelle mentioned it a few years ago, twenty twenty, when she was elected as this board supervisor. And the other supervisors completely ignored her. But you know, when you look at the forensic audit that was performed on the bonds issued and the purchase of the Reddick Country Club, and you realize on page three, at the bottom of page three, there's a little word there that says, "A complete set of financial records have gone missing from the Reddick Country Club." Okay, a complete set of financial records. I've done audits. I've been in finance and accounting my whole life. And I've only covered in two situations where complete books of financial records were missing. And it wasn't because somebody left them laying in your car or something. It was on purpose, to hide things. So if you think we need, if you think we don't need a forensic audit, I'd like you to go read page three of that report. I want, I want, I live here. I pay taxes too. I wanna know what happened to those records. Who was in charge of ensuring the security of those records when they existed? And why haven't we answered that question? This other one I have circled here, policies that kind of flows into the human resource thing. It all comes together, and we won't have to multitask when that will have a contractor do it for us. And we'll get it faster and better. How many of you here, before you got on the board, and, and recently, in, in the last month and a half or so, how many of you knew that we had an ERP system? How many? Let me see the answers. Well, in, in township, you didn't have for how long? That's what I'm saying. Before you got on the board, you didn't know we had an ERP system. Now, if anyone doesn't know what an ERP system is, it's an enterprise, enterprise resource planning tool. And it usually gets spread out among all the different departments in any organization so that they can talk to each other, use certain platforms that relate to their specific jobs, like purchasing, accounts payable, projects. We don't use it. It's controlled by one person in the township. Who's got access to the ERP system today? Who's got access today? You have access? Where do you have access? Okay. We've been trying to get access for at least two months, right? At least, I think, two months, by the way, okay? You don't have access to it? I don't have access. We can't get access to our ERP system. Who said, you think we need a forensic audit? I think we need a forensic audit. I think we need more than a forensic audit. It's absolutely incredible what, what's gone on in the past eight years here. I think we need goals and objectives of each of our managers, of each of our employees. You see, we gave everybody a very generous raise every year. They get three percent right away, you know? And then when Ranger was here, he got fifteen, twenty, thirty percent in bonuses. One year, he made over two hundred thousand dollars. This is your money, folks. Go ahead, tell me I'm full of baloney, okay? But I take it very seriously. And we gave everybody a raise, but a lot of them had no reviews because they have no job descriptions. We don't even have any policies for any of this stuff. You overfunded a pension by ten million dollars. This is your money. And we just put it, threw it into pension for ten million dollars. It could be ours in our bank account today. And we're gonna look into that, right, Chad?
I think that's what the board does.
Yeah, okay. So I wanna touch a little bit on the missing financial records. In two thousand seventeen, a couple of things happened. Just so, I use, this is for your information. If they hear this, they won't go tell anybody else, right? But here's what happened. Speaks managed the golf course in two thousand seventeen. He was getting two thousand dollars a month for, for that one year. And you never, I, I read all of the minutes. There's never any discussion about any missing books. In two thousand eighteen, the forensic audit was conducted, and that's where they discovered books were missing, okay? Ranger was the treasurer in two thousand seventeen. Some guy named Ramsey Munir was the assistant treasurer, the running man. And then the finance director that year was Jennifer Savage. So these are the people that should be able to answer the question of where are those books and records? And I've asked them the questions, except the one guy, I don't know who it is, the sister. And they've never gotten an answer. The promenade. The promenade has cost us about three million dollars. We buy a building, they tell us that we're gonna move everything up there. We're gonna use this building, right? Couple months later, all G, bad news. It's got a leaky roof. It's got a black mold. We have to tear it down. That cost us, somebody asked them on the social media, how much did that cost? Cost a hundred forty thousand dollars to tear that down, okay? I talked to a company that was interested in buying that property, and the guy just shook his head. It's a shame you tore that building down. And it is a shame. It had a steel frame. All it needed was a new coat, a new set of clothes. It's all it needed. I wanna find out, initially following our list of things, who did the due diligence on that? Who decided to tear that building down? Because it could have been, I think it cost us a lot of money in the long run. We're, we're, we're working in the dark. We're, we're like blind here now. Does anybody know how many projects we had called a retention? I know the answer. I already know the answers to my questions, by the way. So, kinda like a lawyer, it's that, right, Chad? You always know the answer to the question. But, uh, so we have no idea how much money has been authorized for engineering. And then once the engineering is done, we have no idea how much work committed to spend. We have that budget on the website. I don't know how much it's been, how much of it has been implemented and has not from the ten million dollar project in trap line. Then we had Simone Collins present us with a plan to spend ten million dollars a day for her homestead. And then they went to buy, like, saw the, the projection of the promenade buildings, forty-one, forty-two, fifty-one million dollars, and that's just for the buildings. Where are we getting all this money? Because I know people are sensitive to tax increases. And we haven't had a tax increase for seven years, really. Nothing substantial. So our, our, realistically, what we want and, and what we don't want, it doesn't drive. We want all these things. We want all these services. And, and I love it. I mean, some of the ideas are really great. They really are. But we have to balance what we're gonna provide in services and what the public wants to pay. And you talk tax increase, and, you know, a certain group of people, they just, you know, I, I, they must be ancestors of the people of the Tea Party in Boston here, a hundred, a hundred years ago. So, but I can understand the point. Some people, we wanna fix a budget, and, and we have to be so sensitive to that. So I'm listing all these ideas, and they're great ideas, but how do we pay for it? I think you two mentioned that earlier. We have a problem with the ERCCP. And I want Chad, hopefully, to put that on his list. We need to investigate them. There will be a presentation about them that will reveal more information about them than they, than they would like to know. But as you know, three of the five supervisors are ERCCP members. And they control the focus. Someone mentioned tonight they'd like the new logo. Well, let me tell you about the logo. I, I'm gonna recommend to the board that we revert back to the old logo, okay? For this is a number of reasons. So let's just, let's just talk about cost, okay? Because I spent twelve years as a cost accounting manager. And I can tell you that this township is cost sensitive. Because the more we spend, the more we're gonna need in taxes, folks. The logo, it's a small thing. It's just a little housekeeping thing I thought of. Because I had today being four or five times township trucks drove past my house, and I saw the logo on the door, and it's the old logo. So if you want the new logo on there, it's gonna cost us money. Larry, you here? Is it gonna cost us money if we switch over to the new logo or, or what?
We're gonna have to get some printed up. We don't have any printed up for the trucks.
It's gonna cost us some money. So I was saying, keep the old logo. It was created by a high school, uh, uh, senior where they had some, uh, uh, test or, or, or competition. And I think it's great, and it represents our pioneering, uh, uh, where we came from. The other one is just an engineering thing, you know? So I'm gonna recommend to the board that we keep the old logo. Keep the cost down. If you look at our policemen, their patches on their shoulder is the old logo. They like the old logo. And if you don't understand what it represents, it's very simple. It's an arrowhead. Look very closely. Be observant. Uh, and then it has two old, I don't, for lack of a better term, it's called Kentucky rifles. And then a cavity in the middle, and then the eagle. The eagle represents our Exeter School District. That's who they are, right? Exeter Eagles. What does this new logo represent? I have no idea. And I looked at the social media comments, and I can tell you there's, there's people from both sides. But far in line, the, the side that wants to keep the old logo, they, I think they win the vote in that one. So these are the kind of things that we can handle, and we don't need to, uh, just do the top three, top four things. We need to address a lot of them. There's a lot of them quicks. One last name, and then I'll get, I'll get off the air. And that is, uh, Georgia and I are gonna discuss this, about creating the trust. And I'm gonna tell you, folks, if I leave this board, or other people here leave the board, and the old board comes back, the people send us, the old board, they're gonna spend all this money that we got from the sewer plant. We should have never sold that sewer plant. That was a false narrative that got us nothing but grief, okay? But what I'd like to do is, I'd like us to work right now, Chad, on creating a trust in perpetuity for the people of Exeter Township. And I want us to begin in putting at least twenty million dollars of it. I think we can get more. Maybe we can go as high as forty. I don't know. But let's do twenty right now because if we don't, we're gonna find ways to spend that in ways that we shouldn't. And then if we can grow that money, and then someday, it will really subsidize your taxes if you're sensitive to it. Maybe not us, maybe your children's children or their children. But that's what I'm thinking. We're gonna preserve some of that sewer money, and we're not gonna spend it. If, that what they wanted to do was spend it on a promenade. I'm telling you, these construction companies, man, they were salivating waiting to get those contracts. Trust me. I know how it works. This isn't one of my top five, but it's an important one. And I want us to work on getting constant feedback from the public. We need to create something on our website or somewhere where people contact, when they contact the township, they are asked to fill out an evaluation of how they're experienced with interfacing with anyone in this township, how they felt. Give us feedback on that. Because I can tell you, I could never get a hold of township manager. I don't know where he goes and never return my phone calls, you know? And, you know, I know they hate me down there, but still, you, you should control your emotions when you're dealing with tax pay. Oh, whether you like it or not, you, you do what's right. You know, that's what your job is to do. So, and I'm more important with George, he taught me with the slogans. We know that we have plenty of space to, to, to utilize and not have to build these expensive buildings at the front. The police are gonna get more space. We're gonna move the other departments out of there. The magistrate's building has over two thousand square feet. And we, and if we don't learn anything, I mean, I've known this for a long time, but if you leave a building vacant, it's gonna decay. And that's what they did to the, the clubhouse. So we wanna get someone in there and, uh, keep, keep that going. And finding the website. Somebody went, mentioned the website. George mentioned it, okay? So the website. I spent a lot of years in soap opera now. I wrote this stuff pretty much every day before. And I look at our website. Our employee directory doesn't have any of the supervisors in it. Doesn't have our phone numbers, our emails, or anything. It had all the other township supervisors' information in there. You can't go to the employee directory and send me an email unless you find it somewhere else. And you sure can call me because my phone number's in the, the March, the March news letter, okay? Uh, this is Kurt Schubert here. And she's listed on the supervisor, but when their term is up. Well, the date of her term is wrong. She, she expires the year before me, and she's two years before me. She's gonna expire around twenty-five or something like that, right? Uh, let's see. Uh, yeah, well, they have twenty-six, but it should be twenty-five. And then here are the residence sections where it talks about our taxes. Well, guess what? If you have employees, I've seen it, they're paying for the taxes. Has the twenty-twenty mileage in there. Talks about the twenty-twenty tax year. People are not doing the job, folks. And if, I'm sorry if I'm tough about that, but I expect, like, we, we pay our people very good salary. We really do. That is one thing I can't say, is, is we. We pay them very, very well. So if we, if we think we can only, you know, three or four things, and that's it, I also recommend that we have three town supervisor meetings a month. Michelle will tell you, they used to do that, okay? We have such a mess, at least this year. We have to do this because I look at this year as the foundation. We need to build a foundation. We need to, uh, fix the structural deficits in our organization before we can really kick things off next year. These residents deserve it. I think our residents expect it. They unfortunately don't understand how terrible the problem is. And I'm sorry, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just the messenger, really. And we have to evaluate all this stuff. And I, and you don't hear anybody, maybe, maybe someone here will contradict you when I stop talking. But I, I'd like to hear the feedback, okay, if you do contradict me. So, uh, that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, everybody's so close to my ears now.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I've been a supervisor for a long time. And I know that the early boards that I was on, we cared about what happened, and we made sure we took care of what happened. We didn't raise taxes. We made ourselves go to whatever money we had. I walked into that Reddick Country Club, and I was almost with tears. It was, it was such a mess. It was letgo, and it's such a destroyed place. And there's all kinds of history with it. So I'm glad that order thinks that we need to work on that, one of the first things, because it's very important. And I do agree that we need a good meeting room with speakers, just so everyone can hear. Also, our manager, we're hoping to get a manager that lives in Exeter Township or will move to Exeter Township. I had absolutely no contact with our old manager. So I spent two years really just doing nothing. I think one area we need to work on, and I'd like to see us have a historic society. We have a major, and a lot of sites in this township that need to be preserved. And I think that's important. I think everybody will realize how great this township is if they see where we came from. Currently, there's no checks and balances as far as our employee is built. I would like to see the employees be able to further their education in what they do so they give us all the right information. And I want them to be very friendly with the rest of the board and with the residents because you're the ones that put us in this office. Uh, there's a few hazardous things we need to look into to make sure we don't have any problems in the future. And I think that a lot of our planning is for the future. It's for the future so taxes don't get raised, so things don't get us destroyed. And, uh, I mean, Dan will moon, that's the first one, how important that is. And let me see what he can get. We definitely do need a good manager. And I think everybody else covered anything except, I'm still here for a couple of years and I'm gonna work my, you know, what off to make sure that we get this back in shape. And I promise you that. Thank you.
I missed three things. Well, the project here for the Riddick Country Club. So we're gonna spend a lot of money fixing this club up, okay? We really are. So the first thing is we keep asking this, nobody takes any action. I don't know, what do I have to do? Do I have to run a request? Do I have to fill out paperwork? But we had the Festival of Lights at the Riddick Country Club, okay? Now, I talked to Larry and other people. They tell me that when the other departments do work over at the Riddick Country Club, they charge it for it, okay? But the government had a Festival of Lights and our finance person told them, don't send us an invoice. And I would like to see an invoice of twelve thousand dollars from the Riddick Country Club to the government, Parks and Recreation or whoever threw that Festival of Lights deal. That's one way that we can transfer money to the Riddick Country Club. It deservedly so. If Morning Store had been there, they would have charged us about that much at least to use all three bank loans and the whole building. So I'd like us to invoice it for twelve grand. And then I would also like us to reallocate the three hundred thousand dollars that we received on the bond staff who related into the Riddick Country Club bonds and move that money over to the Riddick Country Club for capital improvements. We're gonna need it. Also, if I read it right, in the Pennsylvania Township Magazine, Chad, that we can utilize monies from COVID and the money we're getting for anything that the general fund would cover. At least that's what I read. We need to verify that. So the general fund would be, would have to cover a lot of this work because I don't know if we have any funds left in the Riddick Country Club. Finally, and I will stop it after this. Take note, please. We wanna talk to the devil's advocate, okay? To company and Maryland. It will not cost us one penny. Not one penny to use the devil's advocate. And they will come in and they will audit our legal bills. And we paid millions of dollars in that ridiculous, crazy lawsuit with, what was it? Viva. And, and I mean, millions, over a million bucks, I know that, and I know, and I can tell you this. When I appealed some of my right to know requests, the township, I got accused of spending all this money, but it was the township that spent all this money challenging my appeals. And I asked to have copies of the legal invoices from the lawyer and they had three, four lawyers working against me to defeat my appeals. You don't need four lawyers to challenge a right to know appeal, do you, Chad? No. So I am confident that we have over billing from our previous attorneys and our township supervisors never asked the question. They were too busy pleading in that golf alley. I'm telling you. So we're gonna see if we can get some of that money back, okay? And it won't cost us a penny. What the devil advocate does is they take whatever they retrieve and take a percentage of it. So we wouldn't have gotten this anyway if they hadn't done the work. And I'm gonna keep going after this stuff in the past, I'm sorry. But if it's recent past history and people didn't do their job and we're working here on a Monday night while we could be home with our families or doing something else, I think we should chase these things and try to make it right for the public, for our public. So, that's it.
Thank you, Dave and Michelle and Georgia Diner. I'd like to add just a couple of things, and that is, is that I believe that taking care of the fire department and the police department is extremely important. But also wanna go back to the website and it says, doing business in Exeter. So we wanna grow the commercial business in Exeter. But if people listen to our meetings, I'm not sure they wanna come and do business in Exeter because we don't make it sound very positive to what we do. What we do is we basically tear ourselves down. And I agree with Dave, there should be an overall comprehensive plan so that when we put these things out that we go about it the right way and we also have a comprehensive plan, you still take care of the most important things first. Because when you take care of the most important things, a lot of the other things are taken care of along the way. I think that Mr. Whitehall made a comment at the last meeting. And he said that we need to do things to bring younger people into the mix. Now, I'm seventy-one years old and I would dare say, just looking out into the audience, there are a number of us that are past sixty. So, to your point, Dave, when we get all of this stuff fixed, you know, unfortunately, a lot of us will have to be around to reap the benefits. We are doing this for the next generation, but we gotta do something to make sure we get that next generation involved. And I agree with you that there's a lot of toxicity in what's going on, but I think some of the times we create that toxicity, right? And we have to make sure that we stop doing that. We have to work together and we have to figure out what's most important. We all say that we wanna do things for the community and for the citizens of the township. But at the same time, we're talking about all these things that need to be done, but I have not heard one thing about how we're gonna pay for it. Can't, don't wanna raise taxes. You don't wanna test money for the sewer system sale. If you don't bring in commercial business where we can already generate some tax money and tax revenue, where does it come from? So we have work to do. And I think that, again, there are a number of things on the list that have to get done. But we have to, we have to move forward with a conservative mind from the standpoint of spending. And that's where I see it. So, at this point, I will move to
Is there any levels?
Or something? I don't really have, I can speak loud. I don't really have any levels. The only thing I'd like to say is just to clarify. When I said three to five days, I didn't mean that all of them. I was just saying three major, three to five major, really big things that we have, okay? Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. I love a lot of the things that you talked about. I think that, I know the board is looking to make this township better. I have no doubt in my mind and all five of us are looking for that. So I just wanted to kinda, there's lots of little things we can get done along the way. And I hope, I want to get them done. So just making that a little, it's all I got. So, did you want to come up here?
Yeah, I was mostly looking at this, it's like an idea aggregation and help us prioritize as a board the items that are gonna be in our agenda. So there's gonna be lots of comments to a lot of things I will share. But it was an effort to get the list itemized in a way where our actual normal agenda is orderly and strategically prioritized. Like, last week we had to work out, we had, you know, pull my hair out, how is this on this agenda? So this is, my goal for this meeting was to get some strategic priority to our agenda. So I think it'll be robust and I like a lot of things. I will say, just to comment on a few additional things that were brought up. Though, one thing, we might have to consider three meeting, that we have so much ground to cover. I think I'm in favor of that. But rather than make this deliberation, that's just my first thought on that. And then, just two other quick things, since we're collaborating with the microphone one at a time. We looked at possibly investment, not the trust, point Dave, I'm coming down on that. But on a CD ladder and every two weeks that is by, that's one of those other things that we're losing interest in. So I'd like that one, get to work, just come with that, to be on like the next agenda. So we're potentially forward on that. So I meant to emphasize that earlier because yields are going up, treasury yields are going up. Saviors finally get a little bit of interest. However, inflation is eroding. We're not in a position where we're even getting these higher interests yet. So that is a tactic we must do soon. And then lastly, with regard to the email addresses, they're typically variations of our name at exertownship.com. So mine's first initial and then your last name. So for me, it's gball@exertownship.com for those that, not an excuse for the website. That is the methodology, first initial, last name. So if you follow that, you can pretty easily reach any one of us towards that end. I will say, I may kind of drive them to the business page. So if there are any, I guess I'll put the invite for business leaders that would like to collaborate on around the table or something like that, I would specifically welcome that type of email. Any resident you're welcome to email, make no mistake. Just saying anybody that would help and give some feed and teeth to the Economic Roundtable or Business Roundtable, direct it my way, you're welcome to do so. But you probably now have the format for all of our email addresses because they all follow. I am not expecting right, they all follow, that's the same, that's the same format. And other than that, I look forward to next steps on a lot of things.
Okay, so are we, are we gonna be able to determine the key items of the next agenda, Chad? Or do we have to? You know, I feel like a problem with the way it's formed. The agenda is for the board supervisors. The agenda is for the board supervisors for their meetings. So board supervisors meeting, we have a next one day. And I can tell you that I had very little participation in the agenda. And I went to, I'd like to avoid three hours of meeting. I mean, I don't care. If we really have a lot of work, we need to do three meetings. Or hey, I could go through twelve o'clock. Let's get the stuff on there that I'm wanting on there. And so, I know that, but I'm just saying, I know we don't wanna do that. But we have to, you know, we, the five of us on the board really should have the input on what that agenda is. You know, what are the topics that they wanna address? Because there were, you know, there's one presentation on there that didn't have to be on there, okay? Just being people irate, you know?
Kind of like a very different one.
So, you know, I mean, you know, I wanna look at that agenda with all five of us to give it our blessing before it gets, becomes the record, okay, on Friday. And I don't know how we do that. I think somehow we could coordinate through Chad, maybe?
Well, just to answer your question, when you have a township secretary, normally that is one of the roles of the township secretary is to help form the agenda and coordinate with the supervisors. Obviously, we're missing both, we're missing a manager, secretary and assistant secretary.
Or the manager cares for the agenda.
Correct. So my thought is, you know, this is kind of, at least from my line of intent, to have a open discussion on the board to talk about whatever goals, priorities, how do we see things moving forward? If there's items you wanna have on the agenda at the next meeting, you know, certainly we'll circulate the agenda and go from there. One of the things I would note is that with respect to the agenda, you know, we can certainly circulate that. One of the things that's unusual with what we're, our current practice at the moment is the board is approving the agenda at the beginning of its meetings. That's not a typical practice that most boards do. So if there's, there's obviously an ability to vote no.
Well, I read there are some other rules of orders that it does allow. I think some boards don't do it. So I think that, for example, the first time we did it, that the agenda was all screwed up, you know? We should have the most important things at the top, okay?
Which we did.
And sometimes we don't, you know? So that's why we should keep it all, or just screen it all. But I, it's my, and it makes everybody feel differently, that's why.
Especially with the president, so I would now say no after that. But then I would say no right now.
But what you're talking about is the agenda is put together. The agenda is set out to the board as a draft. The draft gets, the board gets opportunity to review that draft, right?
Yeah, well, we had it, I know I had it.
You get the draft agenda. But anyway, so I hear you. So we'll work toward getting that corrected. But I do wanna take one issue with one thing you said. When I talk about living in the past and looking back, I am not talking about not understanding that we have a building that's gonna celebrate being in existence one hundred years or of course, it's been in existence one hundred years. What I'm talking about is constantly pointing back, looking at what other boards did. And if we're looking back in two thousand six and two thousand eight, there is absolutely nothing that we're going to do except spend money, which is what you're telling me you don't want to do. Spend money frivolously. And if you, if you get into a situation where we're chasing those rabbit holes, some are all yours, no disrespect. But some all yours are going to make a great deal of money on our backs. And I do not want to spend money doing that when I can spend money doing things that are gonna help us go forward. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, here's the thing, I've been there, I've done that.
Speaking of life for you.
I've been there and I've done that. And the point I'm trying to make is I don't care when it happened. If we evaluate the situation, there's a potential that the township can prove losses or recoup its money. It all depends on the evaluation and it's on a case by case basis. I, I have evidence that we can look at about how we ignored the sewer plant and we allowed it to go into total disarray. I mean, Vandermaat and Granger fired everybody that worked there. And we have a memo, I think I showed you that memo, from EEM where they said, "Hey, you fired everybody that knows how to run a plant. You put us in charge, but we don't have anybody that knows how to run it." And that was the year we went from making two million dollars at the sewer plant where we lost two million dollars. It's just incredible what has happened to this community. Because it was so hard and, and I mean, the community should be really proud of itself that they were able to construct a sewer plant. And this sewer plant was, we have a seven million dollar CD in there. They wanted to raid that CD. They used that seven million dollars for, it was earmarked to pay off some of the loans against the sewer plant. But also, we could have used it if we needed repairs. You know what they used that for? They were waiting to get their hands on it so that they could buy the product.
You can't do this. You don't have to get this platform.
A story you're out of order.
You're out of work. What are you gonna do?
So, so that seven million dollars was used to buy the product. It was used, we didn't resolve the, 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 the legal deal with RCC until we knew that we were gonna get that sewer money because we didn't know how much we were gonna pay. Okay? And then we finally concluded in two thousand and nineteen. So there are times, Carl, if the, if the evidence warrants it that we're gonna go after anybody who passed, I don't care who it is. Right now, we're not going that far back. We're only going back maybe two thousand seventeen at the most. So it could be some really big deal right now.
That's fair. But the
The message doesn't necessarily always come back because we're not going that far back. That's all I'm saying. So, again, okay, maybe I won't. But the fact of the matter is, it takes three of us to do it. Takes three of us to make a decision. And, you know, some people's flexibility comes along with, if you're doing everything the way that I want, I can be as flexible as you want to be. And when there's, when there's lack of everything the way that some of us want it, there's not flexibility. So we have to be flexible and work with each other. That's really what I'm saying. And I think if we do that, we can get someplace. And while there have been things that maybe some of us are not happy about that we stepped into, everything is not rotten and dim red. There are still good things going on in this township too. But we need to start talking But we need to start talking about those, as well as to talk about the things that aren't going the way we want them to be. That's all I'm saying.
Do you have something else to say?
I just find that everyone in that corner, these boys have to stay. They're very, they don't want to lower the mountain. I don't want to lower the mountain at all, I mean, please, if they were making more. They're great, they're, they're so good with the public, and I just, and the fire company, we want to make sure that they are taking care of. But I have to tell you about this board. This board is great. I have never worked under a board that I constantly didn't have to look over my shoulder. So, I, I just wanted to let everyone know that I really appreciate what everybody's doing. We're working together on a lot of things. And we have to remember, it's all for the people out there, but thank you for that.
All right, so, we're at a point where we will take comments on the non-agenda items. And the first person on the list is Tom How.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I thought at the beginning of the meeting, that you allow these people to answer the information that you gave them before agenda, non-agenda items. Because these questions that they might have about your information are pertinent and probably more important than the non-agenda item. I don't really care, but I thought that's what you said.
So, is there an appetite for, does someone that have a comment or question in reference to what we presented? Okay?
Why can't we have, we have a school field down there? It can be a field. Why, my mouth is big. Why can't we have carnivals or something down there to raise money like they do over at Conrad Weiser? They have community days over there. They raise money. Why can't we do that? Now the summer's coming up, they should start thinking of things that we can do.
Can I ask you your name and address for a minute, please? Can I ask your name and address in a minute?
Marcy Madera, forty-five sixty Green Tree Road. And another thing I have, I want to add, we live in this community, but we have to go out of this community and have things done, just like when it comes in, come tax time. We always used to go to the Exeter Library for the art. We're taught by art, Exeter Library don't want them over there. So, we've got to go up the hammer, arc the least port, but we can go over there and vote, because I heard the polls.
My name's Claire Cortez. How's everybody doing? Forty-nine seventy-three Quins Drive. Um, I did email the whole board. Apparently didn't go through. Definitely, I think the first thing that has to be done is that website. Because if you want to continue to communicate with everybody in this township, especially the people who work, the younger families, there's got to be, the number one thing is communication. There's a lot of people that I talk to in the neighborhood, they love the job that everybody's doing. They're watching the video, they just don't, can't come, they can't communicate because they've got families to put to bed, dinner to make, work. So, it's like, if you want to incorporate the younger people, you've got to work on that one thing first. Then you'll get more feedback from everybody else. Also, what I emailed these guys about was the Redding Country Club. And I'll make a little bit of a correction on the hundred years. It's a hundred years for a nine hole golf course. That's what they first put up, next year, a hundred years ago. It wasn't until a couple of years later that they put in the eighteen hole. And it was almost nine or ten more years before they built the club. So, okay, a hundred years next year. I think that we've got it all. We can push at it, but I don't know if we're going to make it, because we're doing a lot more chatting than anything else. But I understand exactly why. We got to play catch up for everything that happened. And it is, it sticks, but that's what we got to do. And my solution to the money, that, because it's, it's now registered, historical register, whatever you want to call it, it also comes with a little bit of business, which means that we can get grants. We, I myself could probably try to get in that website. I actually did post it on social media. The two websites where you could apply for grants from the state and also the federal government. And people do it all the time when they restore old buildings, or when they're trying to preserve something that's, you know, for historical reasons. There's no reason why we can't get, one of the people who work in the township there every day in the office to sit in and take a couple of hours and fill those papers out and send them in. We have a, like a number, it's a registered number for it. So, that's used, we're halfway there because it's already on the register. We just got to, what they can do is say no. But there's money that could be open to us without having to spend anymore or look for anymore. And I think you guys ought to get together and maybe put it out there and ask if the township would like to come in there for a day or two. And everybody help clean the place up inside. I know, I'd put some elbow grease in, wiping things down. I don't know how it would, it would be if somebody got hurt or whatever, or what kind of insurance reasons. You'd have to really think about that, but there should be some kind of a volunteer day. And I, I must to God think that a couple of years ago, they came out with a postcard. And they sent us the postcard in the mail saying, you know, you take a picture of a camera, you're, on your phone, and it'll tell you about the township newsletter. That newsletter is not getting to everybody. It's not getting to anybody on my street except for me, because I'm hooked to the email.
We got, we got a lot of people that have comments, so.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got to say. But thank you, because a lot of people really do appreciate the public's, you know, you guys reaching out to all of us and trying to do a good job. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Arnold Floyd, two Fives Even Drive. I'll tell you, I moved back to Exeter six months ago, seventeen years ago, as President and CEO of Baldwin-Harper Corporation. There's a lot of improvements that happened in seventeen years. I built a house four hundred yards from the house I built seventeen years ago off Exeter Golf Course Estates. What I've done in the last fifteen years, where I retired and I'm building a new, has been a turnaround CEO. Now, here's, let's tell you what doesn't work. A bully project, Mr. Hughes, doesn't work as a change agent. I totally agree that there are unbelievable amount of foundation work that has got to be done and some of the things have been found. But you don't become a successful change agent by dehumanizing and victimizing those who are left. You don't get not allowed to go into an administration building without a chaperone, because you intimidate people when you're a supervisor, Mr. Hughes. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, not many of your ideas, although you've yet to show facts, a lot of rhetoric about what you've researched, I've watched every meeting on YouTube. You've done no presentation about the basis of those connotations. And I'm not saying they're untrue, I'm saying you haven't presented them.
Go to Exeter, you know.
And, and, and now you're on board, right? At the end, at the end of the, at the end of the day, there are a lot of changes that need to be done. And there isn't substantial infrastructure, or job descriptions, or too much personnel that should be flattened. That's all within the purview of duly elected supervisors, who understand their job is to improve, not castigate, not have a platform of indictment, okay, that we can spend a lot of money suing people in the hopes of getting some sort of compensation back. It should be forward focused, and that's not about ignoring history. It's about recognizing what type of history is productive to learn from. One type should just be let alone while you move forward. I certainly, as a taxpayer, couldn't care less if you have to meet four times a month. You ran for office, you understand that in that office, sometimes work's fun. We all worked in private enterprise, whenever work had to be done, it worked harder. I certainly don't appreciate watching town meetings where all it is is castigating and trying to throw stones at prior people. You've got some personal vendettas that you want to let go, or not use the public forum, okay, for this to take place. I pay taxes like all these people do. We want to be represented, not embarrassed. Thank you.
Hi, Fred Whiteoff, West Forty-Seven Street. Couple of things I want to bring up. First, at the next meeting we have next Monday night, why don't we put a forensic audit on the agenda? I've heard you talk about it since January, okay? Put it on the agenda, and let's have a vote. Does the township have a webmaster? If so, who is it? Because I think when we changed the website, Lori was in charge of that, okay? And maybe it was just some high school kids she knew that set that all up. But you really need a webmaster to take care of that website. Espe- especially when you go in there, these folks, most of them are over sixty, I'm over sixty. Some of you have no idea what a webmaster is, okay? But I've worked with companies that have done that, and that's how they get their information out to the people. And the last thing I have to say, and this, I talked to several of you about this. With the job performance of our finance manager, why is she still in that job? Thank you.
Billy B. and Tony, thirty-six oh nine, Perky inhabited. Mr. Hughes and I have had a tremendous relationship, to say the least. So, the seven million dollars that he keeps bringing up is, for those of you that know, when I was appointed on board in two thousand and eighteen, there was seven million dollars, I weren't even a hundred percent sure where the money came from. It was in a C D, a twenty-year C D, it came due. At that time, there was a retirement plan of being sold. I didn't choose to sell it, but I had to finish the job. So, that money then was put into a C D by the township manager for six months, before I even got on board. So, then in January, when it came due, we could have used that money anytime, we did not, but we could have, okay? Legally, we could have. Now, we did make changes so that the township manager cannot just move seven million dollars himself without the board knowing into a C D. So, that was a change that we did, so that made sure there was more accountability. And then, we did use it to buy the promenade, and we used it to, when we settled the Viva dispute. Now, why do I know so much about that? Because Mr. Hughes had filed false allegations against the board that I was on, and that was one of the things that they brought up. Again, that was four thousand dollars of our tax money that he cost us that I have a lawyer. And I still have a lawyer on the tainer in case he decides to keep pursuing any more stupid things. I mean, you talk about toxic relationship, you are the pinnacle of toxics, I mean, seriously. So, I was just going to go through a couple of things. Township manager, you guys are supervisors, you're not the township manager. It's not your job to do the daily, daily operations of the employees. Yes, you are to oversee it, but the township manager is the job. You can disagree with me, but that's not your job. It's, your, your job is, yes, to be his boss, but the township manager should be his boss. And right now, Clarence is his boss. So, really, if you need a partner, you got some of him, you should go through Clarence, who's running. So, let's see, you said about, we paid for a proposal for a master plan. We also paid for a proposal for the promenade, but you don't want to look at it. Anything you're going to do outside of the promenade, in my opinion, is a Band-Aid. But we've already added on a, like, all but a trailer for the police department. So, anything you add, it's just, like, if you really think the Redding Country Club is the pinnacle of the township, is the greatest, then do something that's going to help it. Where the township property is right now could be used for anything if we make it worthwhile, but not if we're putting a fire department, police department, everything there, so. Ah, I think that's about it. Well, oh, real quick, you said about the Festival of Lights, so, and May Days. So, if anybody didn't know, May Days used to just be, my wife went to Exeter High School, back in nineteen ninety, started her age, but she went there, Larry went there. It used to just be a school thing, nobody deal. And then it grew, it grew, it grew, it grew, and then the township got involved. And most people don't know, the township is footing a bill of about thirty thousand dollars, while no money came back to the township, but all the proceeds that was produced came back to the school. Then John Costas ran it for a couple of years and tried to get outside management. So, that was one thing with that. And then the other thing is, like, when we did the, the thing at the Daniel Boone Homestead, they had the Fall Festival, stuff like that, before COVID all hit. All the employees there volunteered their time, not one was paid. I was there, my wife was there, and my daughter, her face painting for four hours. My son was volunteering, cleaning up trash. Same with the Festival of Lights. He wants to put them that paid twelve thousand dollars. All the employees are there on their own time, they don't get paid for that. You know, when Clarence is out driving on the fire trucks, that's not paid time. They're doing that because they love this township. Something that you need to know. All right, I'm done. Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Adam Kowalski, eight Cathy Anne Drive. So, I did have a couple of questions, mainly about the one when you mentioned the master plan for the golf course. I don't know if the plan is still somewhere in all your records, but there was one that was done, because you just brought it up, if they're about it, how it disappeared from the agenda, I guess was the question. And I do remember there were two or three different alternative plans for the golf course particular. One was keeping it, one was making it passive recreation, and then I think another was just potential retail. But that was one, that, that, there was also changing of zoning for that old street, changing other regulations. But that was just something you asked, what happened to it? I don't know. But, okay, okay, that was part of my question, when you asked, like, what happened to it? I don't know. But you were a little worried, and I thought that was just, another one was about the costs with changing the logo. That, the logo happened a couple of years back as well. Miles, when it was described to the people, I assumed it, they presented as it was going to be a small rollout, where nothing currently exist, nothing currently existing was going to get changed to the new logo, but everything going forward was going to get it, so that we know additional costs would have, would occur while transitioning to the logo. So, that was part of why, I was wondering why you were then in favor of reverting back, saying that it was going to cost a lot more money, when, when it was pitched to the people initially, it was a going forward change. So, that way, there were no taking trucks and taking uniforms and changing them at that moment in time, when we needed to buy new ones, because everything ages and decays. That was just then going to be implemented at that point. So, I was a question about what additional costs by keeping that original plan is going to be occurring? Um, that, that's actually it. I'm going to, the rest was already brought up by a lot of people. I like the idea about having more community-based activities, because that's what gets the younger generation involved and invested. Especially having it at Trap Room, Daniel Boone, because those are big green areas for passive and active recreation. So, that's it, thank you.
I'm going to ask you, if anyone has spoken, just write your name and address on this paper, so I can see if spelling your names right. I'm going to prove. I'm going to prove it. Thank you.
Chris Jordan, forty-two Blunt on the Drive. I heard a lot tonight about the website. And maybe Vinnie can answer this, or Michelle possibly. Didn't we spend, like, fifty thousand dollars, like, three years ago, revamping the new website?
Yes.
Sixty thousand.
Okay, that was close.
It was a character right there. You say this as a future listing website.
So is, I mean, is there an opportunity to, you know, I heard about a webmaster, I heard about a lot of other things, but is there a way to hold the company accountable as to the shortfall of the website?
We can't hold them accountable for our stupidity. You go to most websites, and what you do is, it should take about three clicks, no more than four clicks to get it, and any information is wanted. We have some situations where it takes, there's eight clicks to get for the information. And then there's very short routes to get to that information. So I think it was poorly designed, but we accepted it. I mean, you know, if you set forward, if that was any direction, what can you do about it?
Understood. I just didn't know if that was finalized or not. But I do know we spent a lot of money on that.
Well, we can fix it. We can fix it.
I can give you a little more information, because I live in two, two, this is why I did. One of the things I know, the contract's very big, so I did look to see if they were responsible for making updates, you know, things like that, and they aren't. So it's a very slim contract. We don't really hold them accountable for anything. And I don't remember exactly how much longer. I want to say another year or two that we have an agreement with them. And I, don't haul me to that, I'd have to look. But, so, it is a concern. I mean, we are actually, the employees here, some of them within the building, update the website, unlike with other, you do have a webmaster, Mr. Whitehawk, who would, you would contact them. Other municipalities have the company they use, you know, they email them what the changes they need made, any emergency announcements, things like that, they do that for them. So that would be something else that we would be looking at in order to have a service like that, so that it works better for the residents, because it is not a user-friendly website. We hear that over and over again. If you're trying to look at it on your phone, good luck, because it doesn't, there's a way for it to work better on your phone. We don't have that capability either, so, yeah, we're kind of stuck, so.
Sorry, two more items. On the website, I hear you on that, and hopefully that gets corrected. I have trust in the board that that will get corrected, because it is not very user-friendly. And I am, well, I consider myself part of the younger generation. So anyway, I also think the township needs to take a leadership role on the social media aspect to attract that younger generation. I'm not sure who's in charge of that, but right now, you have two online, two primary online media outlets. They're kind of controlling the narrative of what's going on at the township. And I think the township needs to take a lead on controlling that narrative, making sure the information gets being portrayed on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok even, whatever it may be, to try to capture that younger generation and get them involved. And lastly, the lady in the front brought up about having more community events. Quite honestly, I don't know who the parking director is right now. It recently changed, correct? Okay. But one of the things that I might suggest is with Becky or somebody, is maybe put together a community task force, maybe five or six volunteers, that maybe come together and brainstorm on these events. Maybe resurrect it, raise some funds for that. Do the A-Ride, work with Larry, Clarence, and Becky and their team on doing that. I just think there's so much opportunity, you know, once the country club does get fixed up, to implement these things. And I know you have a great group of community members, to get five or six people to lead these task forces and get the community more involved, I think would be an easy, easy ask.
Are you involved?
I would. My wife might not like it.
Have you got a comment?
Yeah, I just want to speak. I'm one of the board of auditors, and we've been doing reviews of certain systems throughout the township. And I can provide you guys with the final report on the website, because I've been gathering all the data, and you should have that for Monday, at the next meeting. But I appreciate it.
We'll go to comments on the.
Can I say something quick?
Matt Miller, three Beachwood Drive. So a lot of what I've written, I think, has already been touched on, but let me just try to roll through this. First, Mr. Hughes, I agree with a good many points you've made, so appreciate all that, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, and please don't take this as a personal attack, this is not meant that way, but as soon as everybody could get up here to speak, everybody in front of them had their notepads open, and he just put everything away. And, like, it was, you weren't even taking note of what people were saying. Just as kind of a bad law, so. Well, your notepad, and you wrote down, there are no pad here with a pen, taking notes, and, and again, I'm not, you know, don't take it as an attack, just, just, you know, I just think it'd be important for people to think that when they're talking, that, you know, maybe you're taking some notes and taking our opinions.
I forget a word you said tonight, or what everybody else said.
Okay, well, and, so anyway, and again, it just, it generally didn't look too good here, but a couple of things. With the Rentin Country Club, everybody says it's a chambles, but does that mean it's not going to operate to have people be able to golf, because that's a huge thing if they're not going to have people able to go on there and start golfing in terms of revenue?
It's like the building, not the golf, like the golf.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I know the building itself, but you talked about there's no management place, so I don't know who's, they're running the pro shop, I don't know what's going on there, but this is the time of year in golf, it's been higher than ever. So if there's not a way for people to go there and golf, it's going to be even a bigger problem. And I'll reiterate about the old logo. You know, I don't think you need to necessarily say you need to go back to old one, because it costs money to change it, or you just do it over time. And you've got multiple logos. Look at Penn State, they got a new logo years ago, but they still have what they call legacy logos. So you don't need to have, you know, one or the other. You can keep the old one, you can keep it there in certain things, and have them do one or other thing. So I don't think that's to be one or the other. And let's see here. There was a one-time supposed to be a committee of township residents that would kind of oversee and guide the Rentin Country Club, but I don't know whatever happened to that. And I would suggest, almost just like what Chris was saying, that there should be a community, quasi-board made up of community members that would be able to tackle that, rather than having to be on the agenda every meeting that you don't get much traction over. And when you talk about space for the employees, it would be nice to understand, maybe at the board meeting on Monday, like, how many people are there currently employed there, where there's not proper space for them? What's the square footage that is supposed to be needed by the township that we wanted to buy the promenade? That could identify then what we really need to do and what the options are. It's just, it's just very generic about needing space, but I think it should be identified about what does that mean? How much space is needed? And the last two things. The idea with proper place and sound system, I mean, all these churches in the area, because of COVID, have developed systems where they livestream. I mean, I don't know how hard it would be, and it's not, I mean, the suburbs of church and state, a lot of things happen in churches. You can utilize things that are already there, rather than take taxpayer dollars, just go out to one of these churches and say, hey, on Monday nights, we'll use your facility. You could livestream the events, have all the sound system you want, so I think that's a good option. And the last thing is, is I understand that there's a certain level of tying that you said, okay, you can't go back to that, but I think if we have the mindset that we should look at the past for mismanagement, or maybe even worse in some cases, you're going two things. One, you're setting precedent to current board and employees that you can do whatever you want without recourse. I think that's a bad message. And number two, you're not only being responsible for people that in the past didn't make egregious decisions, and I think it's important, not to be personal about it, but if they did something that wasn't right, I think they should be held accountable somehow. That's it.
I just like the comment that it was for citizens of the township that played along flowers at the golf course. They did a lot of work there for them, so there are people that want to have that, who are putting in the tears. Thank you.
We'll go to comments on the non-agenda items. Chris Howe.
Tom Howe, post office, forty-six thirty-five. It's late, so I won't go into a whole lot of stuff. Last week was Sunshine Week. The meeting at the fourteenth was terrible. The law, if you don't understand the law, we all have a right to hear what is said. It's in the law. There's live streaming from the township building, and there's videos. And the people have a right, because March is tax month. We pay for all that we get. So if you can't hear that, and the other thing that the attorney will tell you, that if that video has to be used in a court of law, that everybody should be able to hear what was said. And if you can't, then somebody, the plaintiff or the defendant, isn't going to get his due justice. The other point is, at the March meeting, the fourteenth, the supervisors passed a deal to sell the promenade. I'm not here to go for against that situation. The fact is, right now, we haven't sold it. My question is, there's still some remaining buildings. Who's going to demolish those? The township or a person who buys that property? If you go to the back of Lowe's, you'll see that they had to stabilize the bank, and I believe it's a code situation. So the bank up at the promenade has to be looked at, and if the code says it has to be stabilized, who's going to do that? The other point is, right now, we all own that piece of property, and one was going to go there, we all know. So if it's sold, or if we do things slightly different, the public ought to have some say in what we'd like to see going in that facility. The Exeter Commons, the developer decided to go out and get businesses to be in that strip mall. We didn't have really any say about it. We still own the promenade, so we should have the supervisors do something in such a way that we have some sort of input, a special meeting, or whatever. My feeling is, at the next meeting, attached to the agenda should be some sort of summary about what zoning and what can go into that facility, and maybe a list of certain things. I think we have enough grocery storage. I think we have enough storage areas. We need something that the public will support. Some of you have been here as long as I have been here. We all know Big Boy's Restaurant didn't make it, the Boston Market didn't make it, because there wasn't the support from the community. So we need to have something go in that the public wants and that will support. If you don't support it, business is business, they're going to move out. The other deal is, the fire company has been waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and waiting for a fire station. And the figure that was thrown out was somewhere around eight million dollars, plus or minus, I don't know exactly the amount of money, but it's more than just a million dollars that Pat Nascar was going to put up. So where's that money going to come from? They talk about putting a trust, or putting about a financial thing with the sewer sale deal. We might need some of that money. I have other things to say, and I can say those at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
I have to remember thing that I had a few points, but somebody already mentioned that.
I can ask you. Larry, can you?
You can add anything.
Okay. Vinnie, you got your book?
Oh, yeah. I guess I can.
Sure.
I mean, what I was commenting before, whether or not this, it's just for company.
I want to hear it.
I just want to explain on something I missed, or might notice. Then I go.
Vinnie Bianconi, thirty-six oh nine, Perky inhabited. So just wanted to go over a couple of things that I did find out. So Morningstar was doing, like, a pretty good audit of the Rentin Country Club. They were going through the building, turning on everything, cleaning it. They were going to town. Like, I know one guy had about fifteen pages of notes. But they were stopped by a certain supervisor from doing their job. It was going to take about three days, and that job was stopped from them doing, being allowed to do their job. So again, they were going to be able to check out everything, see what's working, what didn't work. They were going to do a full assessment. All that was done, and it was already paid for, because we already paid them for a couple of months worth of work. But that was stopped by a certain supervisor, so that's just not good.
What was the first voter for that, Vinnie?
For, voted for what?
The stop.
One person went there and stopped them?
Oh, yeah, we're stuck.
No, no, I'm still talking, you got your. I'm not asking a question, sir. I'm making a statement. So, as far as the misappropriation of funds, when you were talking about the two-point-seven million, and there was like a, which I found out about when I got on board, there was two-point-seven million dollars misappropriated funds, there is a whole budget. There's a million dollars that we just cannot find. It's gone. But, you know, he wants to go after the task boards. Michelle Kircher was on that board. So, you know, should she have been going after now for that? She might not have voted it, she might not have been on the emails, but again, she was on a board, you can't deny that. That's about it. I, I wanted to apologize for the one meeting that I did come to on January third, where I said it loud enough that I called Mr. Hughes a jackass, and I apologized, said it was loud enough that you heard me call Mr. Hughes a jackass on the tape, so I apologized to him. Thank you.
Hi, I just have a couple of things. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mary Vaknerella, twenty-eight Pennsylvania Avenue. Just a couple of things, and kind of piggyback on, I did like the volunteer suggestions for the community members. I mean, there's a lot that we can do at the Rentin Country Club. And my question is, is if the community is committed to, you know, this golf course and this country club, have we, this is not my idea, it was actually a gentleman who owns Arborette. We were talking about this. But I thought it would be good to mention it. If they're committed to it, has anyone reached out to Penn State for interest in helping with running this? They have a turf management program, they have hospitality management school. I mean, there might be something there that we can partner and have, you know, classes where they can teach on our golf course, and they can, you know, they can run our facility, you know, as far as, you know, with their hospitality management program. But that was, I think his name is Frank, but that was, it's idea. We come out of a community in Michigan that was very community-focused, so I like the idea that you had brought up about, you know, having things to do at the country club. And if we, if we have to, you know, there's only two holes on the west side of Jupiter Grove. I mean, that really could, the whole golf course could really be reworked, and that be, you know, whether it's developed, or, you know, something else that is more community-oriented, like in Exeter, you know, Central Park, I don't know. But those were just my ideas. But those were just my ideas, so thank you.
Okay, so things we said about some work that we've done at the Redding Country Club, if somebody stopped, that was me, I stopped. Because I went up there for another reason, and what I discovered was, they were doing work where we had not signed the contract yet. Okay? You know what people working on a township property without a contract? They were going in, working, had no idea that they were going in. And if you want to chat, you want to elaborate on anything? Please. This is what happens when you say things that you don't know the whole story.
Well, no, what you're saying is accurate. We did not have a contract at Morningstar at that time to perform those services. And, you know, they were not authorized to be there by the board at the time.
Vinnie, I was on that board, but there's five people on the board. How many, how many times did I vote now? Most of the time. I couldn't make a single decision, but I can stand up for the residents of this community and say, no, it's not right. And then we can talk about the 10 cents a tiny buck more for us with the landfill. I think that's the biggest joke around.
But we also have to, he has to give...
You're out of order.
Money to, he has to do it somehow.
You're out of order.
This is not a back and forth. Thank you very much. I appreciate your attention to that, but the fact of the matter is that that wasn't the purpose of what we came here to do tonight. So I'd just like to say as board chair, I really appreciate all of you showing up here tonight. I appreciate your opinions. Whether we agreed or not, the fact of the matter is, the more we talk and the more we work together, the more things we will get done. And if we all agree, we wouldn't all need to be. Okay, so that's how that works. I mean, we have to be able to have opinions that are different, but we have to understand that they are opinions, and it's not personal. It's just the way I feel or the way you feel. And I should be willing to listen to you as much as I want you to listen to me and the board. Because this is a team effort. As I said earlier, it takes three votes to do anything. What we'd like to get to the point down the road is that we probably would never have five votes all the time, but the fact of the matter is, what we have to do is we have to figure out how to work together and get things done. There's some great suggestions that came out tonight, and I think there's some things that we can do going forward that will make a difference. So I really appreciate, again, you taking the time. You gave up your time, like we gave up our time. And I think that's what makes us a great community. So with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.